All right, there we go. All right, first, we'd like to welcome all of our visitors that are visiting with us for our board meeting. And at this time, can I have an adoption of the agenda?
Board President Sparks, if I may, I would like to propose an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I move to amend the agenda to add an opportunity for public comment for those who have properly signed up to speak prior to the board's consideration of item 7.03 Assisted Transportation.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is 2.01 Super Tense Report. First off, school starts in six days, we're excited about seeing kids in school. Staff, all staff returned as of yesterday, and we did have our convocation today. I want to personally say thank you to all who are in their first year at LSR seven. Welcome home and thank you for choosing us. We are fully staffed teaching wise, we have every position full, so that's fantastic. I'll hit on convocation a little bit, but first off, I don't know if you know this, but Williams Wannery over at Lee Summit North is considered the number one football recruit in the nation, high school football player. And he had his announcement on Monday, and it was a through ESPN done live, and we had a lot of community folks come out and other sports teams from Lee Summit North as well, so thank you to all that came, and he did choose M I Z. Thank you, thank you, he chose Mizzou, so that was pretty exciting. Thank you to Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce for being such welcoming host at our new teacher breakfast last week. New teachers got to hear from the 2022 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Holly Dawn, that was her last function as Teacher of the Year for 2022. And Lee Summit Education Foundation was there, and they surprised every new teacher with a hundred dollar check to supply the classroom, so thank you to them. Speaking of welcome back, we did have our convocation today. We had the pleasure of celebrating the kickoff of the year. Thank you to all the staff for supporting us, thank you to the Board of Education for honoring us today. I thought President Sparks did a fantastic job emceeing, and the rest of the board ran across the swag. I'm very impressed with the ability to run with mascot heads from Vice President Foley and Mr. Murdock here. I think they might have a new job at our sporting events coming in the fall, they did a fantastic job. Also want to thank Stephanie Rinty, our Teacher of the Year, gave a fantastic speech. And because we did convocation in two phases this year to fit in West since Cable Dom Arena was being renovated, she had to give it twice and did a great job, and she had several staff members and students join her, and they did a great job. Thank you to Lee Summit West for hosting us, and especially thanks to our amazing transportation distribution facilities and PR team who ensured the day went off without a hitch, so thank you to everybody. Don't miss out, we have a chance for you to influence some important strategic work coming up in the district. Visit lsr7.org/engage, that's lsr7.org/engage to learn about the opportunities to serve on one of three advisory boards or focus groups, and stay tuned for district-wide surveys on strategic priorities and communication heading your way sometime in September. We want to acknowledge that Erin Burnett, she's our LSR seven's early college program coordinator and works out at MCC Longview, she is one of nine finalists for the Missouri Community College Association's Pathfinder of the Year Award. This award is presented to unsung heroes for their outstanding efforts assisting students with their college plans. The winners will be announced in November, and we do have a record number of kids in that program this year, so congratulations to Erin for continuing to grow the program. I want to say congratulations to Andy Campbell, so this last year we added Support Staff of the Year, it's a Teacher of the Year, but we also did internally, we did a Administrator of the Year, so administrators could nominate a peer, and then the Teacher Advisory Committee went through those nominations and made selections, and so Andy Campbell is our inaugural Administrator of the Year, he's principal at Summit Ridge Academy, so congratulations to him. And last but not least, thank you to all the folks who are hustling to get the buildings ready. I know operations, what was the number, over 31,000 pieces of furniture assembled this summer. It's amazing the numbers when you start looking at, and we are coming down to the wire with our bond projects as they're about to come to fruition, so thank you to everybody who's working very hard to make sure we're ready for kids on the 23rd, and we get our facilities as ready as they possibly can be. That's all I have, Mr. President. Next item is 3.01 Lee Summit Education Foundation Presentation.
Good to see you guys, thanks for having me here today. I also want to echo Dr. Buck's comments about convocation, it was amazing, the PR team did an incredible job, such good energy, and I definitely had tears in my eyes during Stephanie Rinty's presentation, and I know I'm not the only one, so thank you for that. I thought Dr. Barker had a good message about the systems and how everyone plays their role and the significance and importance of that, and we are just so fortunate in this school district to have everybody who is passionate and engaged doing their part, and the foundation's proud to do our little piece of the puzzle and do our part. So I thought I would just really quickly today tell you a little bit about what we've, what we accomplished last year, and then kind of a look ahead to what we have in store for this year.
And Chrissy, I didn't introduce you, you want to introduce yourself?
Chrissy Sims, I'm the Director for the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. This is our Board of Directors, we are fortunate to have Heather as our appointed Board of Education Liaison. She's been fantastic in attending our meetings and supporting our events. Some of these faces may look familiar to many of you, and some may not, but we are in good hands, there's just a lot of brains, talent, passion in all of these people, so we're really lucky to have them. As far as our staff goes, we are small and mighty, there are three of us, myself, our Administrative Assistant Krista Fish, who's been with us for a year, and then we just recently added Cindy Swadek, she's our Program and Development Specialist, she came to us last week, so she's new and just diving right in, but she's fabulous, so we're happy to have her. This is kind of a busy slide to give you a snapshot of what we, of the impact that we made last year. We've been with the district for 30 years now, since 1993, and this is kind of a highlight overview of some of the ways in which we spent our funds last year, which included need-based support, as we're all known for the grants that we give out, we gave grants out to teachers and students last year. We also provided a hundred thousand dollars for science kits for the elementary classrooms, and then you can see the scholarship funds that we provided in the grant distribution on that pie chart. Here's a little glimpse at the income that we made last year and the ways in which it came to us through fundraisers and through donor-directed funds for our scholarships, Taste of Lee Summit, Major Saver, and our Friends of the Foundation campaign, which is our community sponsorships. And then here's how we spent it. You can see it's kind of, we tried to diversify and make our impact in as many ways as we can. Real-world learning kind of topped the charts, as I said, around a hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, when I looked at this number, I'm realizing for you all who work with the district budget, it's like, you know, kind of small numbers probably in the grand scheme of things, but, you know, we like to think we're kind of extra in the best way possible, we do the warm and fuzzies, and we try to fill gaps where we can, and it takes a lot of hard work, a lot of volunteers, a lot of events to make it happen. So we are connected within the community, building relationships, and able to make it all happen through our fundraising efforts. This year, our funding priorities are outlined here, you can see we'll be doing another 88,000 toward technology, which we'll work with Dr. Whaley to find out the best way to apply those funds. Our classroom grants, real-world learning opportunities are going to shift this year, we're going to help with the Geometry and Construction Program with workstations in the schools, environmental science investigation projects for the elementary kids at the new Paradise Park location, and we will fund the birdhouse build projects that they're doing with the fifth graders. New teacher grants, as Dr. Buck mentioned earlier, we were able to surprise the new teachers at the Chambers Breakfast with, they each got a hundred dollar gift card grants to spend and get their classrooms ready, so that was a fun giveaway. Student-led grants, this will be our second year funding those, and last year we gave ten thousand dollars away, a lot of which went toward community or their classroom projects and groups like, I think it was, there's the Broadcasting Department Robotics, and different activity groups requested those grants. And then finally, we're excited, this is a new collaboration we're going to do with Dr. Seagan and her therapist, we're going to collaborate on a parent night in the spring, this will be open to all LSR seven families. We will plan to have childcare available to make it easier for parents to attend. The plan is to have some breakout sessions that focus on various topics, which are yet to be identified, but prevalent issues facing our students, and just give parents the information and support that they need. We'll also have a resource fair available, so we're very excited about this one. Stay tuned for date and details. And then just to kind of wrap up, basically, what we're doing is raising friends and raising funds. We're currently in the midst of our annual fund drive, which includes our sponsorship. Dr. Buck's holding up our brochure for the year, thank you for the little plug, it can also be found on our website. And we're also working on our annual fund drive, which is our employee giving campaign. We've got our community breakfast coming up on September 29th, and I'll be reaching out to you all, I would love to have some words from the Board of Education at that event. Race for the Future, if you'd like to put a mascot head on and come down and race with the kids, that would be hilarious, so we would welcome that, but that's going to be on October 14th, that's our 5K. And as I mentioned, Major Saver cards, and then Taste of Lee Summit, I know many of you guys have attended that event before, that's going to be on March 2nd.
Do we have any volunteers for that?
I'll write down some names, okay.
Board Member Murdock said he's in, I'm in, anyone else? All right. Does Short Kids Run?
I will follow up, and this is recorded, I think, so.
All right, sorry for interrupting your presentation, sorry.
No, that's fine. You were our top, weren't you, our top female runner last year? Okay, I thought so. We'll see what you can do in a mascot head, though. This is just a slide about our community breakfast, again, and any and all community members are welcome to attend, you can register online, and that's going to be the 29th at Summit Lakes Middle School. And then we often have questions on how they can, people can get involved and show support, of course, financially you can show your support, but also just attending our events, helping to promote our events, getting the word out there so people realize that the Lee Summit School District does have a philanthropic arm, that the educational foundation is here, and we're trying to just build awareness and raise as many dollars as we can to invest back. And that's all I prepared, of course, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, Board Member Murdock, go ahead.
First off, thank you, appreciate you, appreciate the foundation. I do have one question, though. Last year we invested back almost six hundred thousand dollars to LSR seven. In terms of the funding priorities, those numbers aren't, don't add up very close to that. Is there a large-scale investment of some other kind that we would be looking at? Are you, I guess ultimately, are you hoping to raise about the same amount of money this year as you did last year? Or more, I mean, I get where, but.
Of course, we're always trying to increase, so we're looking at ways to make our events more profitable. You know, we do Race for the Future, we've done it for so many years, but how can we get more people there? How can we gain more sponsorships, that type of thing? One of the differences in the past couple of years is we added a third position to our staff, so the school district, of course, pays for two of our salary, and that's part of your investment back into our organization, along with, you know, facility and office space and that type of thing. We added a third position in the hopes of trying to grow and expand and be able to give back more. So I'm not sure if that answers.
That's fine, that works.
And I think the ratio of our giving versus the investment that the district is making back to us is three to one.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right, thank you so much, appreciate your presentation.
Have a good night.
All right, our next agenda item is 4.01 Board Reports or Meetings Attended, so I'll turn it over to President Sparks.
All right, we're going to go with Board Member Eslick.
Well, mine's pretty short. I attended the new teacher breakfast, which has already been discussed multiple times, but I will just, I know Chrissy's walking out the door, but I'm just going to brag on the Ed Foundation, and I just think they do some really great things, and I've been fortunate enough the last year and a half to work with some really great professionals who have been very dedicated to the district, and it's just been a pleasure, and I love the dedication that Chrissy and her team have to always trying to figure out ways to support kids and the staff in unique ways. So very driven organization, and I just appreciate what they do, so. You can leave now, I just wanted to brag on you a little bit. I know, called you out a little bit, okay. And then, just like the majority of our board members up here, I attended convocation today, and, you know, I'm sure everybody will say the same thing, extremely moving, such a very well-planned event, thanks to our PR team and, you know, our amazing staff who put so much effort into creating such a really fun and energetic event. I just, I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I got to see Stephanie Rinty's speech twice, so that was amazing, so. That's really all I have, thanks.
All right, Board Member Miller.
So I was able to drop in on New Hire Orientation Day, it was here, I don't know, was that the official name for it? Maybe, okay, well, I just dropped in and I was able to say hello and greet new teachers, welcome them to LSR seven family, and let them know that we were excited to have them here, so that was fun. And then convocation, I mean, that was amazing. It was my first one, obviously, and it was just, it was amazing. I'll ditto what Heather said, the communications team did, I mean, you guys are rock stars, so, great job. It was amazing, that's, that's, that's my, my word for convocation, it was amazing, I'm glad I got to attend, thank you.
All right, Board Member Murdock.
I just wanted to highlight the, my favorite part of convocation, just because outside of not tripping and falling, going down off the stage with the mascot head, which it is hard to see, so kudos to the people who do that, because that's hard to see out of that. I dig the song, this is me, I don't know how many people are Greatest Showman fans and stuff like that, but I dig the song, and for personal reasons, obviously, I dig the song. And I would encourage people, if you like that song, or like the meaning behind the song, which is obviously why I really, really like it, I would encourage you also to look up a poem called Welcome to Holland. And if you get a chance, just read the poem, Welcome to Holland, and I think it would resonate with teachers especially, or people that sometimes you deal with, and you think you're going somewhere, and you end up somewhere else, or on the same track, or whatever the case may be, you're taking a great vacation to Italy, but you end up in Holland, and you freak out, but then you realize it's pretty amazing, too, whatever your life track might be, so. That's, that's a big highlight, I wish everybody a wonderful school year this year, and I hope it goes great for everybody, thanks.
Board Member Garrett.
Well, mine's very limited, I was on vacation, I got back from Maui, so I'm doing good. It was, today's convocation was amazing, like you said, I just said it, too. What a way to start off the year, and to see the excitement and the motivation in the teachers, welcoming new teachers, and then, you know, acknowledging the teachers that have been here for 10, 15, 20, 25, 35 years. It was great, and just the interactions with the games, it was so much fun, and just a high energetic time, so thanks PR team for putting that together, my first one, I really enjoyed it, and that's about it.
All right, Board Member Dr. Camilla Johnson.
So unfortunately, I missed convocation today because I have this thing called a job. And, but I did really enjoy recording the 92nd Barbie video, which was a lot of fun, and I told Katie Bergen, this is the most chipper you will ever see me on recording. And waving, so, but I do want to wish all of the teachers, all of the staff, and everyone going back to school a great school year, if my kid cuts up, just tell his dad. And I look forward to getting on with the rest of this board meeting.
All right, Vice President Foley.
Thank you. Mine's pretty simple as well, I attended a school law seminar, and attended the board leadership meeting, and also attended convocation, and it was amazing, so thank you.
Okay, mine is even shorter. Convocation was great, and I'm just going to say thank you to our teachers, all of our staff, for already starting your school year, and then just the message to the, to our students, be you. Be you, but learn everything that you can learn, because education is important, and we're here to support you in whatever way we can here in LSR seven, thank you. Before we move on from this, everybody's talking convocation, thank you to Erica Miller and to Dr. Seegan for helping me with the slingshot and t-shirts, we only hit somebody directly once, so that was awesome. All right, next item is 5.01 Finance Committee Report, and within that agenda item, you can find the link to the Finance Committee that was aired yesterday, so if anybody has anything they want to add to that. All right, moving on to 5.02, no transfer of funds needed this month, and then, so that means we're going on to 5.03, Approval of Treasurers Report and Payment of Bills. Do you have a motion?
I can't read it exactly because it won't load, but if somebody else can read it.
I move to approve the Treasurer's Report and Payment of the Bills.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes.
I think we're all having fun with the internet, mine just froze for a little bit, but it's unfrozen right now. Items for Decision Consent, 6.01 to 6.16.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Items for Decision, 7.01 is our first one, that's a book appeal, A Court of Thrones and Roses by Sarah J. Moss.
All right, this is another book for our book appeal, is there any discussion? Well, first, let's have a motion, and then we can go to a discussion. I know everyone's kind of locked up, just let's free will it with the motion, and then we can go from there.
Trying to remember from last month. My computer's just like literally just sitting here.
Mine froze the second time, can't help you.
Spinning, she can do it, too, it doesn't matter.
I move to retain A Court of Thrones and Roses Without Restriction.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, let's, Board Member Eslick.
I don't have a lot to say about this one, but I would just say, I think we talked last, last month about the possibility of being able to have a work session where we're talking about ways that we could give our families the ability to have more oversight and control over their students, and I think this particular book would be a good one to highlight as something that I think parents would probably want to at least be aware of. It, to me, this one wasn't quite as in-depth and detailed at a level that I would not feel comfortable saying every student should be able to just access it, and I'm making that decision for another parent. But I do think there's some sensitive topics that, you know, would be something that would be very well-suited to be highlighted by some sort of process where we could flag, you know, whether it's sexual content, or there's a good bit of violence in this one, for example, pretty graphic descriptions of violence, things like that that could be concerning or something to parents, so I'm actually not opposing this one. I know I've been vocal about some other ones, but this particular one doesn't have as many concerns for me, so just want to say that, thanks.
Vice President Foley.
Well, I think she pretty much just took the words right out of my mouth, I was going to say the same thing. Considering the other books that we have read, this one did not rise to the level of concern as the other ones. Yes, there are some sensitive topics, and I do think this is one that we should keep in mind if we do change our system and kind of have some kind of a screening or filtering system. I would like to see this book on there, just because it does contain some sexually explicit content and some violence and things like that, but it wasn't to the graphic nature that would cause me concern that would want me to remove it.
Okay, Board Member Murdock.
I agree with, with, with both of them, but I do want to ask the board, we, this is a long series of, of books, right, that this is a part of, and we're about to have another one come up in essentially the exact same series of, of books, right? And so I didn't know if there's any appetite from the board, do you guys still want to review it in September? That, that, that individual book, knowing that it's coming from the same, from the same series. It's fine either way.
And let's just open it for discussion, don't even worry about.
Totally, totally fine either, either way.
I would say that I still do want to review it, I have heard concerns that this one kind of opened the door of some of the adult content, and the other ones went a lot further into it, so.
We will read Empire of Storms, no problem, all right.
Are those your same comments?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this particular motion? Okay, let's do a real call vote on this, please, Ms. Linda Isma.
Board Member Murdock.
Aye.
Board Member Eslick.
Aye.
Board, Vice President Foley.
Aye.
Board Member Miller.
Aye.
Board Member Johnson.
Aye.
Board Member Garrett.
Aye.
President Sparks.
Aye, motion passes.
Next item is 7.02, the 2023-24 Board Priorities, so this is a follow-up after our last work session, and my computer just froze a third time, so bear with me. By the way, the trick is to unconnect the internet and then connect, it lasts for about two minutes.
Or you can just refresh, and that also is helping, helping me just refresh. Okay, so listen while Dr. Buck and you can just come back in. We know that we worked hard, right, in our work session, it was a long meeting, but we got somewhere. We've had an opportunity to be able to engage with district leadership. Is there any changes, any questions, any thoughts? Because this item is for approval, and we are going to move forward. No? Okay.
I don't have any questions, but just a comment that I was thinking about as I was, I wasn't at the work session, but I did listen to it, I was out of town, but as we move forward with these priorities, I'm hoping that the rest of the board is on, is on board with retaining this. I know we're going to have new members next year, but I feel like it's important that we try to keep with this track because, like, when we look at some of these goals, like for NWEA, and we talk about 2% growth, even being a stretch goal, being able to retain this methodology of how we're going to evaluate academic progress for more than just a year, I think is important for us as the board members who are at least for sure going to be here for another year, for next year, that we consider that and kind of at least informally commit that that's what we're going to try to use going forward, so we're not just, next year, we use a different metric, because I feel like this is just one that you have to track, and it's not just a one-off year, you know, just this year, that's what we're going to use, and then next year we're going to shift. So that's my only comment, I would certainly be supportive of pushing to keep NWEA growth goals, both of them that we're looking at, as our metric going forward for as long as I'm here to vote for it. So that's what I wanted to put out there to the board.
Thank you for those comments, Board Member Murdock.
Echo that 100% with especially knowing the waiver that's in place for M66 and the possibility of map testing taking a little bit of a backseat. Super important that NWEA continues to be the metric and that we continue to follow along with that over the coming years. So I 100% echo what you're saying there, no matter who's up here, it needs time. This is a pretty big shift from, for our board to go with a priority along with the goals and data right underneath it, so I really do hope whoever's sitting up here. So I really do hope whoever's sitting up here will be able to continue this. One thing I do want to mention is that while 2%, Dr. Barker or whoever is going to be compiling this data, that stretches us with NWEA and things like that. I would also be very mindful to say, one, don't stop there, obviously, but also understanding that there's bigger rooms for growth and smaller rooms for growth based on whatever their starting baselines are. And that's going to be an important piece for the public and anyone else to make sure that they are keeping in mind that if you're at a lower percentage, there's more room for growth, and quite honestly, I would hope that we would achieve more growth, right? You start at a higher percentage, littler room for growth, and we just need to be... Make sure that if, you know, somebody comes in at 1.8% versus somebody coming in at 2.6, they might have actually grown the exact same based on the starting. So to my fellow board members, just make sure that we are paying attention to those numbers as we look at the goals going forward. Fully supportive of these. Dr. Shelton, we talked today, right, about facilities. I love that goal. Just so people understand, I want academic achievement, right, absolutely, but we need the facilities for our kids to be able to do that in. So I am very, very excited about putting that as a part of our goals and priorities for this year. Thanks.
All right, there we go. So the board, when you outlined this last month, identified safety as one of your areas and accessibility. But then we identified three or four different metrics. Two of those metrics really didn't fit into safety or accessibility, so I created that third category. You may have noticed that. So you had selected safety and accessibility, then I added a third one, service, because of the metrics that you had chosen.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other board members? Okay, Board Member Eslick?
I wanted to shift gears to another one, so if anybody had any more comments on the academic side.
I just have one.
Okay.
To Board Member Murdoch's point with the... I'm good with priorities. I'm good with goals. I've already previously, I've kind of had... We have conversations about some of our subgroups, right? And knowing that there is more room to grow in some of those subgroups, where is our flexibility of moving on that 2% across the board growth goal? Where is our flexibility? Is that something that we need to dictate now? Is that something that can be additional conversation with administration? What is your thoughts? Nothing's ever final, but Dr. Barker, you want to address that?
Again, we can set whatever goal that we want to set. Certainly, we know that if we have a gap, whether in a subgroup gap, the rate of return or the rate of increase of improvement needs to be faster for that group. We want everyone to rise, but if we want to catch up, we need all rise, and one group needs to rise further and faster, right? I think it is worth noting to what Mr. Murdoch indicated, that the NWEA growth measure indicates the number of students who met their individual growth goal, not so much how the group grew collectively. Now, we're measuring increase in number of kids who met the goal, so they're still measuring progress that way. So we absolutely could increase, but I don't know if the goal is to close the gap. Increasing every subgroup to three or five or 10 isn't going to close the gap necessarily, right? We would have to adjust subgroups accordingly to ensure that one was achieving a rate of return that was faster than the others. I do think that setting 2% is a good stretch goal. To Mr. Murdoch's point, absolutely. I hope we can be at 10% or 15%, and that would be the goal. We would just keep going. But again, that's your goal and your data, so we're certainly happy to make it whatever you'd like for it to be.
Let's get this approved. Let's continue the conversations. Is that fair?
Okay.
No more comments? Oh, Board Member Eslick on another point other than academics. There you go.
Yes. Okay, so I know we have talked a little bit about the infraction data and trying to drive those numbers down as part of the goal, and I still struggle with this. And I know Board Member Murdoch and I have both brought this up. And I don't know how we emphasize or try to make sure that this is not a numbers game, and we're talking about, you know, I don't want it to come across to our staff and to administration in the building level that the goal is just to reduce the numbers. So that's my... I just have to put that out there and, you know, express that. That's still a concern of mine because the goal is around decreasing numbers when we're... The real goal is exactly what the priority says, creating a safe environment where students aren't having those negative interactions with their peers or with staff. So I still really struggle with that one. I'm okay with us approving it, but I just have to throw it out there that I just have some concern there.
Board Member Murdoch?
To your point, what we actually are trying to measure unfortunately is an increase in building climate, which is a pretty tough thing to measure based on who you're asking and what question you're asking. And this is, at least hopefully in my mind, because you and I know we share the same concern here. I believe that this goal creates at least the baseline for us to then work off of, which we haven't had in the past. So to your point, I agree with you. Sometimes it's tough on this one. We want the climates in the buildings to be positive, supportive, uplifting, that kind of thing. Hopefully, this is a way to get towards that.
Yeah, we need data points, so...
Right, we got it. We're going to start somewhere, and then we go.
Fully support. I just wanted to, you know, just put it out there that, you know, I think the board is in agreement there, but since I wasn't at that meeting, I wanted to make sure that at least I put that out there from my lips to the world and to the rest of the board. So here we go.
I think that point is duly noted. I think from the full board, right? But I think it's clear that when practices change and behaviors change, then we can't help but to see a reduction in those numbers of discipline. Any other comments around this, around our goals or priorities? Priorities and goals. All right, listen, I'm excited for this change and shift, and at this time, I never got a motion.
We need...
I'm sorry. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion, and then let's vote.
I move to approve the 2023-2024 board priorities and goals as presented.
Second.
All right, can we get a roll call vote on this, please?
Board Member Eslick?
Aye.
Vice President Foley?
Aye.
Board Member Miller?
Aye.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Board Member Garrett?
Aye.
Board Member Murdoch?
Aye.
President Sparks?
Aye.
Our next agenda item is 7.03 Assisted Transportation, Early Childhood Special Education. And this is where we did an amendment, so first, it's a public comment, correct? So I'll turn it over to Board President Sparks for the amended 7.03, which has a public comment and then the decision.
Absolutely. So at this time, I'm going to actually turn it over to our parliamentarian just to read the same script that you would have read for 10.1, please.
Okay. "We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that the board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board and administration, and if appropriate, we will discuss further action with the superintendent. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than seven people with a limit of three minutes each. You may not transfer any of your time to other speakers. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Your comments must align with the subject described in your written request to speak, and you must directly relate to the business or operations of the district. Your comments may not discuss individual employees or students in the district, regardless of whether your comments speak of them in a positive or negative light. Any such comments should be directed to the superintendent, who will then determine if further action is needed. Because the board does not and cannot impose age-based restrictions on who attends or views board meetings, and because children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, comments may not include obscenities or sexually explicit content. Furthermore, comments may not include threats of physical or emotional harm or threaten in any way the safety of others. We also remind all those in the audience that Board Policy BDDH prohibits the use of signs or audible responses. This includes applause, cheers, or jeers. If you are in the audience and wish to respond in some way to public comment, you may contact the board or superintendent after the meeting. When your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any." The amendment was specifically to allow for anyone who had comments on 7.03 Assisted Transportation. So the three people who have signed up, I'll read those names, and if one of those three names would like to come up and speak, then this is the opportunity to speak on this item. Ezra Marshall, Janay Tatum, Swanson, or Stephanie Wozniak.
Just for clarity, if you are speaking to this issue, this particular item, so it is a little different than what we normally do, so that's the only reason why I'm coming back in. If you're speaking to this particular item that we're going to be voting on, which is 7.3, which is about the assisted transportation contract, then you can come at this time. If not, then those remaining speakers will come at our normal public speaking time, okay? Which was just a few items, so Stephanie, you can come at this time. Thank you.
Dr. Whaley, timer wise, you going to be able to get that up here? Okay, thank you.
And if you'll just pause until we tell you to go. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead. If you can hit... If you can turn your mic on for us. No. And you're going to get your full three minutes. Just give us one second.
Is this... Oh, yes, there you go.
Give us one second, we'll reset your time.
Okay.
Then you can begin. All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I wanted to say thank you very much, President Sparks, for letting me speak prior to this amendment that you're making to this thing that you're going to be voting on for transportation. Thank you, everybody who is here. Thank you to my transportation people who are all in back here supporting me and supporting our initiative that we really would like to explain here today. My name is Stephanie Wozniak. I work in the Transportation Department. I am a bus driver, and I drive for Great Beginnings and for Miller Park, both. This vote to hire the assisted transportation company for a four-year contract will affect an integrity of Lee Summit or Seven Littles. The integrity of that is that when a bus, a yellow bus, comes to your house to pick up your kids, that's us. A white van coming to pick up your kid to take them on their first day of school at age three, because they can start at age three, to take them to Great Beginnings, it doesn't say a whole lot. It doesn't say you're safe. It doesn't say that it's us. It doesn't say it's part of what they're paying their tax dollars for and living in Lee Summit for. It doesn't represent that. Yes, Great Beginnings represents that, but we start with that. That's for you guys. We have to... We start with that for our kiddos. We love our kids. There's a special group of us that do this for a reason because we have the love for these littles. That's what we call them, our littles, because they are the littlest ones we transport. We do that because we enjoy their time. We're able to talk to them. We're able to console them. We do other things for them that we can't do for other kids that are older on larger buses. We have aides and drivers that can do both. Both things are there with us, and it's really nice to be able to be that... Do that for them. By doing this, I ask you to please vote no to let them take over this part of our transportation. It's going to affect our aides, it's going to affect our drivers. We're going to lose six hours a week because of this fact. We all have a guarantee of 30 hours a week. That's fine. That doesn't change anything. This bridges the gap. By losing these mid-days, we're going to lose the gap. We have 32 people who will be able to be able to do this. We have 18 that will be able to do it during a midday. That's it. So it's going to decrease the amount of things that we can do. Aides can't do field trips. Aides can't do anything else on field trips to make extra money. That's it. I mean, they're able to do it on a bus, on an aide, with littles or with special needs. There isn't that opportunity for them on field trips or any other kind of things on the weekends. Weekends or nights, we're losing out on our family time. We're losing out on other things that we have for anything else that we can do for our families because we are having to make up that time and that money because of the fact that we are working because we lost that trip, that we lost that contract for taking our kids to school.
That was interesting, but that...
Sorry, that was me.
Your three minutes is up.
So I was like, you just please... I must ask you to please vote no today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any questions, or do I stay up here for questions or no questions?
No, ma'am. We're not allowed to engage with questions, but we thank you for your comments.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, if... I know that there is some follow-up questions that some board members have. And so at this time, if Dr. Shelton or whoever else, Ms. Sanders, and if Bruce could come and just be available for any questions that the board may have. Thank you. And ready, set, go. No, so whoever wants to, whoever. Dr. Johnson?
Okay, thank you. So I was on the Finance Committee meeting, and I listened to the proposal for this, and I had some initial questions. Then I'll be honest, after reading an email and the concern about this, I now have some additional questions or just some follow-ups, some things that I've considered. And I'm going to tell you, it is based on my healthcare background. And that is during COVID-19, many of the hospitals and many healthcare facilities used contracted staff to come in and help support, to cover the needs of the hospitals and things like that during that pandemic or during the pandemic. And it did feel like to many people that worked for the company that they were being displaced. And so when I think about that and I think about this contract and hearing the concerns, I do my follow-ups to some of the questions I had initially. And if you heard the finance call, one of the questions I had, well, how is this going to impact their employment? Well, it won't impact their employment. It'll impact their hours. And I left it at that. But now that I think about the concern about the nights and weekends, I wonder how can we come to some middle ground where we're not displacing people who've dedicated themselves to our organization while getting this contract? And maybe it seems like giving them the... I'm not going to say the better job, but it seems like it's giving them the priority of taking care of these children that have already been taken care of by our own staff who have committed themselves to LSR seven. So if there are additional hours available, I'm curious, how are those hours? How do they vouch for those hours? How do they get those hours? Is it a seniority thing? Do they have to go nights and weekends? Is there nothing else that can be done to ensure that they continue to work during the hours that they were intended to be hired for?
We have two groups of Great Beginning drivers. We have people that volunteer just to do the mid-days, and then we have Great Beginning drivers that do the AM, then they do their mid-days, and then they do the evening when they take them home. All of those Great Beginning people will have a mid-day.
So as a follow-up, just so that I'm clear and making sure we're on the same page, when is it the concern that additional hours would have to be picked up on nights and weekends?
They wouldn't have to make it up on nights and weekends.
Maybe I'm not asking it correctly. So there was... Heather, can you help me?
So I think the concern that was expressed via email to the board was specifically referencing being able to pick up additional hours by doing things like field trips or transporting students for sports events, which would happen after normal hours and potentially on weekends when they're taking them, you know, wherever, meets, games, whatever. So I think that's the specific instance that Board Member Johnson is talking about. Other than those opportunities, are there other places where our drivers are going to be able to recoup the hours that they may be losing by not being able to drive the routes they've typically driven?
They get their six-hour comp summary, and that'll be met. And then the mid-day, that'll be the same mid-days that they've been doing. So the six hours that Stephanie was talking about would been if they don't have the mid-day, because that'd be like an hour, 15 minutes, hour and a half, every single day if we weren't able to do that. I rechecked it today, and they all would get a mid-day. The regular Great Beginnings drivers.
So are you saying their six hours is typically met morning and afternoon, and then there's the mid- So are you saying their six hours is typically met morning and afternoon, and then there's the mid-days an additional? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay.
So is your response to the board, and I'm just doing this just for clarification, is that hours will not, there will not be additional hours that any of our current transportation employees will have to pick up to meet their hourly obligation right now?
No, they do their six-hour comp, and then they do their mid-day.
Okay. Any additional follow-up questions? Mr. Board Member Murdock?
I have a host of questions. Number one, I would like a little bit simpler question. The people who are currently driving morning and afternoon Great Beginnings routes, will they still be driving the morning and afternoon Great Beginnings routes if we approve this contract?
No, they wouldn't be doing Great Beginnings AM and PM. That would be the contractor. And then the contractor's doing one half of the mid-days.
Right, okay. My second question, how many kids are currently on the waitlist based on transportation needs?
So right now, sorry, right now, we're still enrolling Great Beginnings kids. They have a week delay before they start school. So we currently have 270 enrolled in the Early Childhood Special Education Program. We have 120 appointments that have been made for screenings for additional kiddos. And we also have 20 to 30 developmental peer files that will receive invitations to attend the program after their August 25th meeting. So right now, we do not have a waitlist. But I will give you an example of what happened last year. March 14th, Early Childhood received an email from Transportation that the AM legacy routes were completely full, and they could not take any more kids. Right? And so then at that point, the only way that a kid can access a bus, if that is their needed mode of transportation, is for another kid to fall out of that slot. Right? So that, that's what we're talking about when we start talking about students not being able to access because of transportation or a family has to figure out another way to get the kiddo there because that route is full.
Okay, so give me, give me your best, best guess on how many people you think would end up on a waitlist by October, October 1, middle of October?
Well, if we go with assisted transportation, our goal is at none. So that, I don't know that number.
Let's assume we don't go with assisted transportation. How many do you think might be on a waitlist?
I'll just say this, we have 68 that are coming for Head Start. And we, this will be the first time in four years where we will, for Transportation, hopefully we'll be able to provide bus services for our Title I preschoolers at Meadow Lane. Their route was dropped four years ago, and they were not provided bus services since then. So they will be picked up in addition. So I don't have a solid number for you right now because they are still rolling through enrollments and doing screenings.
Okay, and so then two, two more here. The first is, is that one of the things stipulated in our information in the packet and the contract that assisted transportation or the proposal that they have to us gives them a six-month window to stand up, right? My guess is unless I'm, and please tell me that I'm wrong here, they're going to go and they're going to recruit, they're going to hire, and they're going to get a fleet ready to go for our, for whatever kids they need to be able to transport for us.
Yes, you're correct.
Why would we not, as a district, try to hire the same number of people for the same amount of pay and do the transportation ourselves?
Well, I don't run transportation, so I'm a step back and let somebody else answer that.
And I'll speak from experience regarding contracted services in general. There are individuals who would prefer to work for a school district, to have all the benefits we have, pay into retirement, have all those opportunities. There are also individuals out there who would prefer to work for a, for a business that pays a wage, that wages paid on true time, not, not annualized over a 12-month period of time. They don't pay into retirement, that's 6.5, 7% that comes out of their paycheck. And so there are, are individuals who like that pay structure better than working for a school district.
Do you think it's possible that those individuals are out there, that we would be able to do this internally?
Well, I will tell you. I would say, you know, we recruit, we recruit all the time. And we're hiring, if you, you know, you heard my speech today, we've hired 29 drivers, and we continue to hire each and every day. And we'll hire every driver past full capacity at this point because we know we're going to lose drivers, you know, as the school year begins. And as we're near capacity now, we know in, you know, three weeks, we may not be. So to answer your question, if we could hire enough drivers, if we could hire enough drivers, we could be more nimble. We could be more flexible in our routing to, to make this happen. But right now, we, we can't hire enough drivers to make this happen.
Okay, and that, that's a fair answer. But now from a numbers perspective, I just want to throw this out there because I don't understand the proposed contract. The first year is nearly $2.5 million for a six-month stand-up and what then is the equivalent of six months of transportation that they're actually going to offer us, right? At 15 to 20 vans is what the contract says, right? Five students per van, whatever. That part of it, the next year, we're paying them $3.3 million, okay, to, to do this particular contract. So even just from a numbers perspective, I'm unclear why a stand-up in the contract is 75% of the total cost, and we're getting six months' worth of the benefit.
Actually, we hope to begin a portion of the routing prior to that six-month period. And you're right, by January 1st, we would love to have 100% of this routing in place. But by October 1st, we might have a portion of it in place based on their ability to get drivers, train drivers, go through the process of setting up those routes.
Okay, and, and in this regard, in this regard, and I respect the heck out of you here. So I hope I'm not trying to attack you here on this, okay? Okay. But in the contract and in the proposal, it says that if they can stand up in the first semester a few routes, that's fine. But it actually even goes so far as to say they don't have to be fully taking over until May 31st of next year, right? So is there a provision even within the contract to prorate that rate all the way down to whatever they've actually provided throughout the school year?
We could negotiate that with them. You know, to be honest with you, it is with great confidence that, that we have entered into this agreement or asking you to enter into this agreement, knowing that January 1st, we expect them to be in, by January 1st, we expect them to have full routing in place.
Okay. My last comment is, and this is a comment, it's not a question, I guess. My kid went to Great Beginnings, right? So I'm probably showing a little bit of bias here because he got to get on the bus. And actually, that was, quite honestly, that might have been his, the highlight of his day. I mean, to be perfectly honest with you. He loved the little lift, obviously, there to bring his chair up. So, so that was really cool for him. But I do think there is something to, to be said for the image that this creates. And while it's a monetary issue too, and I, I get that, though I'm not real keen on the monetary issue here, because I don't think those numbers work out in the first year. There is an image issue here in terms of not only are we asking somebody else to do something for our district, which I get, we do that in varying degrees, but now we have vans and buses that don't have the LSR-7 logo going through our community. I think that does say something, right? I think that says something. But I'm just struggling because I've looked up assisted pay since we got this last week, right? And I don't doubt that they're a good organization, right? I mean, I, I did contact somebody in North Kansas City, right? They're pretty happy, pretty happy. But I also think that six months to stand up something gives us as a board maybe a little bit of time to have a discussion, even if it's till September 7th, right? Something like that. Because I'm just being flat honest, I'm not comfortable with this tonight. I'm not going to vote for it tonight. And so, because I think we can continue to explore alternatives. And I would like more information before making a decision like this today. We're committing to 12, what was it, $11 million over four years. I'd like a little bit of grace, I guess, to ask more questions and get some more answers before we move forward with something like this.
Board Member Murdock, I would say we could wait till the regular September meeting because also you want to have Mr. Holder be able to explain how reimbursement works through transportation for this. So that, because that's, that's a different thing too with this, so.
Do you want me to hold off on that question? Because I had that one too.
So I am hearing enough questions and direction that we need to go and try to renegotiate a prorated and answer more questions. I also hear, both sides are making great points, right? We, we value our Transportation Department, and I love that they love to do, do those routes with these kids. I really do. I also hear Ms. Sanders saying we don't have services for preschool, for a school for four years, and that we turned away kids towards the end of the year last year because we didn't have enough space on our current routes. So those are competing, good thing. This is a tough problem. So I, I think we need to slow down, take our time, from what I'm hearing. And we, we give these guys some time to answer your questions and also negotiate. But I think we also need to make sure we give them plenty of questions immediately so that way they know what to tease out and bring back to you on September 28th.
Right, and so to that, to that point, you know, we talked about deliverables, right? I'd like two of them right off the bat, okay? Number one is what is our capacity at Paradise Park, Great Beginnings, right? And if we want to put in Head Start, absolutely. The routes that we're going to run, right, that's current. What is, what is our capacity for the number of students that we can take even from a space perspective? Because it would be my guess that we can't add 170 to our current space allocation anyway. Not saying that we couldn't add 60 or 70, right? But I'd like to know what the, what the overall capacity is. I would also like to know the comparison of benefits and pay that we're trying to do between bus, between our transportation and assisted transportation. I think that that's something that is very, very important here to, so that we recognize what we're competing against, quite honestly, right? Because that's what it is. And the third thing that I would like, and this is something I thought about for a long time tonight, Dr. Buck, is I love Great Beginnings, but I have to recognize my role here is to make sure that the kids in the community have a spot, if they need a spot, in our buildings. Which is why I 100% appreciate you being willing to delay this just a little bit because I think we need to work through this a little bit more before we just make this particular decision, I guess. I have some thoughts, but I'm going to keep them to myself here until I ask some questions, so.
So at the end with our new protocol, either Board President or Vice President will ask for confirmation. And if they agree, then we'll put those on deliverables, okay?
Okay, yeah, sorry. Okay, I'm done. I'm off my soapbox. I'll be done for now. But I definitely want to delay, so.
So the two requests, let's give them to the full board that Ryan Murdock just made, right? I saw you writing, so we got them. My question is this, with the delay, are we hurting any child with the possibility of being able to receive the education that they deserve?
So right now, we, we should be okay first quarter as we continue to do screenings. The other thing to keep in mind about Early Childhood, which is different than our K-12, is that they can access services from when they turn three. And there's a kid turning three every day, right? Unlike kindergarten, they have to be kindergarten by a certain age to start. And so while we may have kids move in and out, we're not adding an influx of kids. This is just a little different because we do add an influx of kids. And it usually ramps up, you know, in that second semester time. So we'll keep close eye on this movement. Another thing to keep in mind is that we had these concerns running out of one site last year, which was Legacy. We are now up to two sites running the same amount of buses that we were running at one site, right? And what we found from routing so far is that trying to draw a line somewhere in our district in order to push these buses that way and those buses that way have created an imbalance of enrollment between the two sites. So we're heavy at Paradise Park and low at Legacy based on routing. So that's something we'll continue to work with Transportation on to try to balance that out so we don't have higher numbers at one site and lower numbers at another, which is where we are now. So that's something that we'll be working on this first quarter. Head Start, yes.
Can I follow?
We have two Head Start classes. I think we currently have 63 kiddos enrolled in Head Start.
I, I
And they're going to need another bus. I think we talked last, yeah, we're going to have to add a bus for them.
But for, for clarity's sake, in last year before Paradise Park, we have satellite classrooms that were going on for our early childhood, right? So the number of kids that are going from satellite classrooms now into Paradise Park, the capacity of the program is still relatively similar, correct?
So the capacity
I understand the geography that you're talking about here in terms of buses and stuff like that. But when you're talking about buses, a total number of buses running now from one, just into one site, they weren't really running into just one site, right? They were running into the Great Beginnings plus the satellite buildings that they were delivering kids to, yes?
But what we were able to do is sort of graph them geographically, and so it shrunk down the area that a bus needed to drive. Right now, what, well, law says that a preschool kiddo can't be on the bus for longer than an hour. And so we did have a couple of instances last year where we were hitting on that hour. And we were looking at using one of our McKinney Vento, so our homeless vendors that we use to help get those kiddos down less than an hour. So, so this isn't a new problem. It's just now that we are on two sides and we've started routing and tried to figure it out, we are just in a very particular situation where the capacity was already very tight. And it, and it feels and seems very tighter now that we have geographically just split, split our district into two different halves, but our population of enrollment is not split equally within those halves.
Well, and, and to your point, I, I want to agree with you on this one too, right? Because our early childhood centers are now primarily located right north and, and east, right? In terms of our district. So if you think about one of our fastest-growing communities down in the South, that's a long haul, right? And so I, I do understand what you're saying there, but I, I thought it was important. Satellite to, to Paradise Park, satellite to Great Beginnings, where the consolidation is a great thing. It's causing a little bit of similar issues now, two campuses versus one, right?
Well, and to your point, the satellites, what we were able to do, the satellite, the biggest satellite was in the south part of town.
That's right, yes.
Right? And so you were able to concentrate those down there and not cut close to that one-hour period. But now that we have these two different locations, we're having kids come in where we are cutting really close to that time. And just how, and I would say that we probably, Transportation, myself, Dr. Shelton, and Early Childhood have met at least six times this school year to try to map out routing for these two buildings. And every time we thought we had it figured out, we did.
Right.
Right? Because kids would come, right? You would figure it out. And so it, it has just posed a very different challenge or opportunity, I guess, than what we thought would be. And so it's just growing with this and trying to navigate it. But I would imagine, you know, Dr. Buck has charged us over and over again relentlessly to grow Early Childhood. That was the promise behind Paradise Park, and that is absolutely our mission, is to increase access of early childhood education in our community. And a piece of that is being able to have the transportation to do it, right? It's one thing if families can say, I have a babysitter in the afternoon, so my kiddo can only go in the morning, and us saying absolutely versus us saying, well, actually, we only have transportation in the afternoon, and then a parent having to decline that service.
Perfect, and I appreciate all three of you answering questions for me here. I really do. You probably are going to get a few more from me, so, okay, thanks.
So my, is there any additional comments on this particular item? Go ahead. No, it was working. I thought you already spoke, so I took it off, sorry.
I mean, maybe I did. I don't remember.
You're fine, go ahead.
So I, and this might be in the weeds a little bit, but I'm going to ask it anyway, and we'll probably talk about it later. One of the portions of the contract and part of the stand-up is an investment in, in the transit vans. With the reimbursement funding that this program qualifies for, does that also, does that funding allow us to purchase equipment like transit vans of our own that could be reimbursed under that funding? Just as a question.
Yes, it does. 100% of the miles would need to be associated with that. So whatever miles that would be driven for Early Childhood Special Education could be, could be reimbursed, yes.
Is one of our struggles in hiring drivers Is one of our struggles in hiring drivers specifically for the CDL certified drivers or is it all drivers?
There is some of that, yeah, yeah.
Because the what someone can make with a CDL in a private sector is significantly more likely than what you can probably make. So just is this an accurate statement? Would it be easier to hire drivers who are not CDL certified to specifically drive something like a transit van?
You know, I I'm not sure. I've never, we I don't know that we've ever posted for a position like that, and so I don't know what the.
Well, just a post, posting for a position that does not require a CDL, just a driver.
I don't know. Because once again, I'll go back. I don't know. We've never.
So, okay.
We've never posted for that.
That's fine. It's it's a fair answer. I'm just, I'm just.
I I would say logically, yes, because there are fewer requirements.
It just goes.
In today's job market?
Yeah.
Don't know.
It just go, it kind of goes back to, you know, what Board Member Murdoch is talking about, like it, could we do it? What does that look like? And that's kind of what I'm getting at is if that that certification is not required. And we can use the funding to invest in our own vehicles. So just the curiosity of that.
So the transit van's an interesting idea, you know, it it can't have, it can't transport more than nine, ten? Seven?
Seven. There's seven and they'll put car seats in there forever.
And so, you know, that's a special kind of van.
And they can only do two or three if it's wheelchairs, by the way.
So.
Experience.
So we would need to work with DESI on on that as far as, you know, is, you know, is it going to be a school bus? And then how's that, does that, you know, to Board Members Murdoch's comment, you know, if it if it looks like a school bus, then it has to meet certain requirements. And that changes thing. Then all of a sudden, well, now you need a CDL. So there's some complexity to it.
I'm I'm going to interject right here if I could. Um. Student impact is important to me. So let's get these questions in. I want to know about student impact. Once student impact start taking place, then a decision has to be made. And I would much rather this board just vote no against the contract. And that just be it versus us not knowing where we're at with this because of the importance of student impact for me as an individual. Let's, so the directives to administration, Dr. Buck, is the two requests. That Board Member Murdoch has made from the dais. Mine is, is the minute student impact is playing a role, if a decision has not been made, then it needs to come back before this board so that we can vote on it.
Can I, can I just share?
Yes, ma'am.
So when we sat down and met with Assisted Transportation and said, hey, what can you do for us for the start of the school year? And they were like, nothing. We need time. Like, we got to set it up. And so they said that in North Kansas City, when they entered into that contract, North Kansas City gave them six months to get stood up and get ready. Because like every, I know we're talking about like our drivers are our drivers. Well, with Assisted Transportation, our drivers will be our drivers, right? We will not share them with another district. They're exclusively drivers of LSR seven to ensure consistency with the kids. And so my fear is that if we wait until it is a problem. We're going to be in the same situation because we won't, they they won't be able to stand up that fast. And and, you know, I don't think that when we met with Assisted Transportation that we knew that it would be all us. We thought maybe we would, but it is exclusively all us. They will stand up a depot out here to house all of the vans. They will have routers and staff exclusively for us. It just takes time to do that. And I would just hate for us to get to the point where there is a need and we're working on a delay.
Okay, I'm going to, we're going to hear from Vice President Foley. I'm going to make a final statement and then we'll move on from this item. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I just wanted to ask if we should amend the motion so that we are delaying the decision versus voting on the actual contract today.
Yes, I think we just need to disable this item until September the twenty eighth. And so that kind of goes into what my comments are going to be then. September twenty eighth, this will come back before the board as an item for decision. Any questions, concerns, conversations, dialogue, meetings that we need to schedule prior to, that needs to happen as soon as possible. Is the full board on board with that? We're going to postpone until. So let's.
I believe we've already made a motion, correct?
Correct.
So we.
We have not made a motion.
All right, then you don't have to do anything.
Right, we went right into the the decision. So I mean into discussion. So.
You actually don't even have to table it technically. You don't have to.
Right, because because there hasn't been a motion on the floor. But let's give a deadline. So our meeting for September is going to be the twenty eighth. So the twenty second, so that's the last day for the board to submit any concerns, questions, discussions. If there, if there's things that come in, I'm just going to give the heads up to the board. If stuff comes in on the twenty second, I will call a special meeting. And that special meeting is so that we can come back together and be able to hash out whatever needs to be hashed out. So that come the twenty eighth, we're ready for to vote, okay? Up or down. I I that's just the decision of the board, okay? Everyone's good? All right, let's move on.
Next item is a presentation eight point zero. Sorry, Mr. Murdoch, go ahead. Next item is eight point zero one. It's a Items for Information presentation. It's Nutrition Services Annual Program Evaluation. And we have Ms. Lori Donella up to present to you.
Good evening. I hate microphones. I'm going to present our annual evaluation to you. I'm going to state first that we are a self-supporting department for those of you that are new on the board, which means we receive no funding from the district. The only funding we receive is from the meals we serve and from our à la carte. So we have big shoes to fill with equipment we have to purchase for our payroll, for uniforms and for everything that we provide. Our department consists of myself and I have Lindsay Salazar. Salazar is our Assistant Director. She takes care of all the special diets and nutrient analysis and everything that pertains to. Any regulations on special meal accommodations. Missy Hanner is our Second Assistant Director and she takes care of all of our staffing. And we have Sean Comfort. He's our Technology Coordinator. And he does all of our software and hardware needs. And they also, in between the three of them, supervise all twenty-five of our locations. Our mission is to provide meal opportunities that meet the nutritional needs of students' grades pre-K through twelve and an affordable cost. Encouraging healthy eating habits, personal fitness and proper dietary choices. And these students here are experiencing some of the farm-to-school products we had. We did fresh corn on the cob last year and we also did a lot of fresh peaches. Our hundred and seventy staff members provide breakfast and lunch to all locations. Breakfast, lunch and snacks to Head Start. Snacks for the YMCA BASS Program. The Seamless Summer Option at Meadow Lane, which was an open site this year. Breakfast and lunch for Summit, for our Summer Learning Institute. We have an in-district catering service and then we also provide nutrition education. This shows our participation for meal and à la carte. And what we kind of focus on right now is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, pre-COVID. Because COVID really screwed numbers up and there were large numbers, there were low numbers, so that's what we compare ourselves to right now. For breakfast last year, we did four hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight breakfasts. We did a little over one point four million lunches. And we did over one point eight million in à la carte sales. This shows our revenues and our breakdown, our largest revenues from our lunch sales. À la carte is second and then breakfast comes in and then miscellaneous are just some grants and some different funding we get from DESI. Our expenses, our labor is our largest chunk of our expenses. Food comes in next and then with us being self-supporting, we pay for our own technology, for our equipment and for all supplies and repairs. This shows our budget for last year. We ended the year with two point seven million dollars. Our goals for last year were to continue to expand our farm-to-school program. We wanted to offer additional offerings and really promote and market the program. Farm-to-school benefits everybody. We connect our stakeholders through a community food system via purchasing, processing, distributing, preparing and preparing foods for the school meals. Our goal number two was to finalize our ten-year equipment replacement plan. We had a lot of old equipment out there. There's a lot of equipment out there that's twenty, thirty years old. And we are behind getting that replaced and we are working on that and we started on it this year. Our goal number three was to promote our program through the media. It's very important for us to engage our students, parents, teachers and community to know what we do and why we do it. We allocated seventy thousand dollars of our commodity funds to Department of Defense Produce. We also requested an additional forty thousand dollars. When I find out there's extra money out there, I go for it and I got every bit I asked for this year. We offered local fresh peaches. We did corn on the cob. We did green beans and our kids got to experience heirloom tomatoes. They thought the purple tomatoes, something was wrong with them, but after they ate them, they found out that they were really good. We share all information on our farmers. We think it's important for the students to know where their food comes from and the hard work those farmers do. And we marketed our program on social media. This is one of the bulletin boards our schools did. Root shoots and muddy boots meet our farmers. We have some very talented managers and staff out there and they do an awesome job. Goal number two results, I'm not going to go through all of this, but we replaced more equipment probably than we've replaced in the last five years. So we are trying to get caught up on that. The walk-in freezers and coolers are a huge chunk of the budget. Because some of those units are, like I said, thirty years old and they're only made to last maybe twenty. Goal number three was engaging parents, students and community through media outlets. How do we know that we were successful and what the results were? Were all the positive comments we received on social media. We participated in four live TV interviews. We had interviews and articles published at the local, state and national level. We were featured in numerous magazines. We were featured in several magazines. And our department was also the topic on several podcasts. And we collabora- collaborate with Katie and her team to publicize updates and information about our program. And of course, our Lee Summit Nutrition Service Facebook page. And if you haven't been on there yet, please get on there because we like to brag on there. And we want to show everybody what we do for the students and show what the students are eating and what they're having fun doing. Our strengths are we are the district's nutrition experts. And we worked hard at strengthening our relationships with our principals and other administrative staff. We found out that our staff was very flexible. We had a huge labor shortage last year and we were pulling staff from buildings and they were going to different buildings, sometimes two and three buildings a day. And also we found out we were flexible with all the product and supply shortages. The students never knew when we didn't get a hundred cases of pizza in or a hundred cases of tater tots, one of their favorite things. They never knew that happened because we always had something to replace it with. And our leadership team was able to take part in numerous professional development trainings at the local, state and national levels. And we were able to bring what we learned back to our staff and trained our staff on what we learned. Our celebrations were Connie Kingsley, our inventory specialist, was named Missouri Mountain Plains and National Employee of the Year through the School Nutrition Association. Stacy Carter, our manager at Highland Park, was named Missouri and Mountain Plains Manager of the Year. Lindsay Salazar served on the Heart of America Planning Committee. Sharon Owensby, our catering manager, served as Southwest Region Director for the Missouri School Nutrition Association. I served as the Nutrition Education Committee Chair for the Missouri School Nutrition Association. And one of the things we're most proud of is opening the kitchen at East Trails Middle School. That is kind of the future kitchen and it doesn't look like an institutional kitchen. And it is showing progress on the school nutrition front. We were able to purchase a catering van instead of borrowing one from either facilities or special services. And we were able to host six dietetic graduate students in our department. And how do we know we're successful? These smiling faces do it for us. And this is a picture of one of our garden bars and we just keep trying to expand every year. And are there any questions? I know I went through fast, but this has been a long day and I know everybody's tired.
No, you you did awesome and we appreciate you giving us this information, Dr. Johnson, and then Board Member Murdoch.
I wanted to say thank you for this. And secondly, when we went on our orientation, we went to East Trails and we looked at the kitchen. I was like, how do I volunteer in nutrition services?
You come talk to me.
Okay.
I'll provide the apron and a visor for you.
First off, thank you very much. Excellent. With the ending of the USDA waiver last year, right? I believe that then we picked up, they decided to reimburse a little bit more for free and reduced, right? Was there any movement this summer in terms of universal, universal meals or increased reimbursements on the meal front? I had seen something in the spring. That's why I was asking and I I'll be honest, I hadn't followed up and so.
Missouri hasn't made any movement since last spring. There have been four other states that have approved it. But Missouri's still stagnant, so please get out there and and talk to your legislators because it it's vital to our students. We are going to lose six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars from those reimbursements that we won't have this year.
Okay, thank you. I I hadn't kept up, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or question?
Okay, I have Nutrition Service, our own Pixie Dust. And for customer service this year, we are really stressing to our employees the smiles and having fun at work. So I have your nutrition Pixie Dust.
That is awesome. See? Can I have two of them?
Board President Sparks, can I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Lori mentioned Pixie Dust. I just have to share an anecdote, actually. And I'm pretty sure it came from Nutrition Services and not someone else in the building. But one of the school visits that Vice President Foley and I went on last year was to an elementary school. And at the school, they had a student who was a Ukrainian refugee. And I think you probably remember this, Jennifer, because I was so impressed with this. The Nutrition Services team put on the sneeze guard, I guess, I don't know if that's like the technical term. But on that piece, in Ukrainian, the food names of whatever was there for that student. And they only had the one student, but how amazing for that student to be able to go in and eat lunch or breakfast or whatever the meal that that student was experiencing. He came to the school not knowing English at all. He's a refugee who got kind of stuck here. Just amazing testament to what your staff does. And I just wanted to share that anecdote because I'm sure that that was that student's Pixie Dust. And made him feel very welcome. So appreciate everything that your team does. Thank you.
To that point, every student matters and that's what that means. All right, we're going to go and move on to.
Nine point zero one and nine point zero two are written reports of items of information. So nine point zero one is Human Resource Development Program Evaluation. Any questions?
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm just the, anyway. The only, the only question that I had is our, for Dr. Carlson, is based on our hires and knowing that we are almost fully staffed, right? What did we see as the essentially the positions that we still struggled to attract? Essentially moderate pools of candidates, right? I mean, that's that's my only question of this. Otherwise, I did appreciate the report. It was excellent, by the way, so.
So right now, the only persistent vacancies we've got mostly are custodian. That's where we have the the most vacancies. All bus driver positions have been filled. We're down to three para positions. We do have a handful of resource aid positions. But I think we're at seventeen custodial.
And most of those are nighttime custodians, correct?
They are, yes, mostly all nighttime.
And the contract that we approved today should take care of that.
Will definitely help, yes.
Okay.
Alright, okay. Thank you. That was it on that one. Thank you, Dr. Carlson.
Any other questions from the board on those reports? Dr. Johnson?
Sorry, I raised my hand. I did have a quick question, just looking at the reports. And when we look at the total number of employees we have and then we look at certified versus classified and diversity, are, are percentages increasing because simply the number of employees we are hiring is larger or our employee base is larger? Or are we seeing, are we making some changes in hiring practices or improvements where we're seeing more diversity because of that? Those changes.
We're not hiring more employees. Our, our staff, number of staff is, is pretty consistent. Uh, we are being intentional about recruiting and, and making sure that we have diverse candidates and practices that help us, uh, recruit and identify the, the best candidates for our positions. And part of that is having a, a broad and diverse candidate pool.
Okay, and sorry, I didn't mean we're hiring more, just over the years, the number of employees we've had are, are hired. And like, till twenty nineteen, we didn't have three thousand employees. We had less?
So, our percent of employees who identify as minority has increased over the past six, five, six years, if that's what you're asking.
Right, I just wanted to make sure just as in the function of, we have, there's a larger percentage to start with.
I would say that we did have a big increase last year when we opened East Trails and employees. I think it was over a hundred extra employees. Uh, but usually, no, most years, it's, you know, half a dozen to a dozen employees we add.
Okay.
I do think that we are, we are getting really good at hiring veteran staff from other districts and from another state, um, which means that we obviously don't get to have them for thirty-five years, like we saw somebody for thirty-five years now. So, we'll see, as we continue that, we'll, we'll see a little bit higher turnover than we had before, uh, because people are retiring. Almost everyone who leaves us, a very, the vast majority are retirements.
Okay, thank you.
For the category of, um, diverse, is it everything other than white and decline to identify?
So, when, when we have defined diversity as, um, yes, everyone that, the people of color, non-white.
And we've had, I think currently, five employees who choose not to mark, um, anything in that category.
So, it says twenty decline to identify, so obviously that number would not include in your percentage, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, then, it, so, I just wanna make sure I'm following. So, on page seven, I can take all of those numbers other than the twenty-six seventy and the twenty and then that is my total number of diverse candid, of diverse staff, correct?
Twenty-six seventy and twenty pulled out, those are your diverse employees, correct?
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, any other questions?
And, and Board Member Johnson, just to let you know, when you hear that two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three employees last year, that does include our part-time employees who work, um, at, uh, at the Aquatic Center. So, the two thousand six hundred, that's, that's full-time employees that he's talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Not just Aquatic Center, also games and, you know, doing.
Hourly.
Yeah, the hourly folks who come just do a few things.
Yep.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Nine point zero two, twenty-twenty bond, budget update.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Board Member Murdock?
I just wish Mike from J E Dunn was here so that we could give him kudos and also the, it's a race to the finish kind of, uh.
He was at the vendor fair and I said, I'm surprised you can get away. He goes, I have one hour, he said.
I'm su, not surprised, not surprised.
Alright, any other comments, questions? Okay. Let's go and turn it over to Ms., um, Board Member Eslic.
Do I need to read the parliamentarian rules again?
Um, was those individuals that were speaking here?
I think at least one was. I don't know who the other person is.
If you're on the speaking list, if, was you here when we read it the first time, that when we read the rules? Perfect. So, no, you do not. Thank you.
Great. That's a time saver for everybody.
It is. So, let's just go and just call the names.
Okay. Uh, okay, so first on the list, Ezra Marshall.
Good afternoon. My name, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ezra Marshall. I am a seventh grader at Bernard Campbell Middle School. I'm in orchestra and I play sports there. And I am here to talk about being able to carry a backpack around school. At Bernard Campbell Middle School, there is a rule that does not allow students to carry their backpacks around during school. So, today, I would like to provide reasons why it's important to carry a backpack throughout the day. Being able to carry a backpack around school makes it easier to get everything you need and move it from, from class to class. There are a lot of things required for, uh, class, like school, like books, Chromebooks, water bottles, folders, and other writing utensils. Where I, when I have PE, I need items to freshen up and change clothes. There are lockers for students to use for PE, but there's no guarantee that everyone gets a locker. So, a bookbag is convenient. If anyone has a music class, you will need a music, you will need music books, folders, and other materials. A backpack will make it easy to have a lot of, a lot of it in one place, to carry it all around school. In order to keep aisles clear of backpacks, teachers could have a special part of their rooms where students could put their backpacks or just have students put their backpacks on the back of their chair. If we're thinking about safety before class, teachers could have a quick backpack check. Please consider, uh, changing the rule to allow students to wear their backpacks around during school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Janay Tatum Swanson.
I am Janay Swanson. I represent Suburban Balance as an Equity Representative and an LSR seven parent. I have a child in middle school and one in high school in this district. I bring to your attention today the two thousand twenty-one and, uh, to, to the two thousand and twenty-four Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, also known as the CSIP. And its goal numbered two, which states the LSR seven school district will foster a responsive, caring, and inclusive environment. There are five action plans, but to my current point, I'm gonna emphasize Action Plan two point one. And it's to recruit, retain, and promote diverse staff. LSR seven plans to do this by developing and monitoring a system to recruit, retain, and promote a diverse workforce within a district, increasing staff diversity as representatives of the student population. This action plan, as well as the other four, lacks quantitative goal, which would benefit tracking of the progress of these actions. Having quantitative goals will allow for measuring of progress, also assisting in being able to monitor the recruiting, retaining, and promoting of diverse staff. According to the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one and the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three Human Resources Reports, staff has increased from two thousand and five hundred to two, to three thousand, including about the three hundred employees that leave the district each year. The increase in black teachers only went from five point one eight percent and two thousand, two thousand and twenty to six point five three percent in two thousand and twenty-three. While black students make up approximately twelve percent of student population. An increase of barely a percent does not fulfill the promise of go to or come close to increasing staff diversity as representative of that twelve percent student population, especially when it's already low. According to the NWEA test results, black students score among the lowest across the board. Multiple studies have shown students do better when they are represented in the staff and in the curriculum. To make our district better for all, we must be more aggressive in improving the diversity in staff. Please include quantitative goals in the near-future CSIP action plans. As a parent, I can attest how both my children have under the, have thrived under the teaching of one of the few black teachers in the LSR seven district who happens to be this year's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Renty. My daughter's confidence increased like never before. My son's love for science was rekindled. I urge you, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Stephanie Wozniak already spoke and that is the conclusion of the people who signed up to speak.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Don't need a motion, right? Let's just adjourn.